Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Due to governor statewide disaster declaration relating to the COVID-19 pandemic and current public health guidelines for social distancing, I've determined that it's not prudent for the members of the village board or staff to convene in person for tonight's meeting. Therefore, the members of the village board are attending the meeting by video conference. Those same conditions require barring access to the public for in-person attendance. In light of those limitations, the public is invited to attend and listen to the meeting through the Zoom platform or by phone as indicated on the meeting agenda. To comply with the Open Meetings Act requirements for virtual meetings, tonight's meeting is being recorded. If I could ask village clerk Schmidt to take roll call and make sure that everyone can be heard.
Yes, trustee Baraski, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, good evening.
Good evening, trustee Kritzmeyer.
She's not here tonight.
Okay, trustee Michaux, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Trustee O'Connor, can you hear me?
You're muted.
Do that again, yes I can, can you hear me now?
Yes. Trustee O'Reilly, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
And I can hear you, thank you. Trustee Tenucci.
Yes, I can hear you, good evening.
Good evening, we can hear you too, thank you.
All right, thank you. If we could say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the flag
of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. The first matter of business we have tonight is the visiting homeowners associations. Any, is Sophia Hansen here or anyone from Bridgewater Farms? All right, well, I see Jeff Wilson here from Briarcrest. Jeff, thank you for joining. Do you have anything for us tonight? You're muted, by the way. Jeff, let's see, can we?
Thank you for, thank you for inviting me. There we go.
Yep, you're good, do you have anything for us tonight?
Not, not too much, I just wanted to ask if anything further has been done regarding the Oman. I just referred to as the Oman Valley Bun property where, which has that fence that is awfully dilapidated and breaking apart that runs along our boundary line of the west side of Briarcrest over on Briarcrest Lane. I know we brought that up last year, I brought that up last year and there was some discussion about it and there was, the issue was, well, how is that going to, how is the village going to handle the enforcement? And there was some talk about partnering with either Buffalo Grove or Mundaline and I so I just would like to hear what the status is on that.
Village manager Jackson, if you wouldn't mind leading that, that would be great.
The, Mr. Wilson, the board has been very sincere in their efforts to get some corrective action over there. Myself and staff were out there the other day, I saw the fence that you're talking about. We have issued the property owner five citations, they went to an administrative hearing today. I'm waiting to hear the outcome of that hearing. I have met with the property owner who wants to bring forth a plan for development on that property as well as Bali Bunyan to the south of there. And we've had some preliminary discussions, but I during my conversation with him, I was very clear that corrective action had to be taken to come in compliance with property maintenance codes and the condition of his property, so I'll find out tomorrow what the outcome of the, of the hearing was today. And I'm happy to get back to you, Mr. Wilson.
Okay, that would be great, I appreciate that, Mr. Jackson. And Mr. Jacobs too, for keeping this on the agenda. You mentioned the, talking about doing some development, do you know what kind of development they're thinking about?
Right now, the initial concept that they brought forth was about residential development and potentially mixed use as it would go along the Apdikisak eighty-three corridor. I suggested to him that he had to be more specific and that the board had to take a look at it and make sure it was in line with the objectives of our comprehensive plan as well as I have come to learn that there is certainly some continuity with the Briarcrest PUD. So I made that clear to him in our conversation as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you, that's all that I had for this evening, obviously, we're keeping in touch with the people there to, keeping in touch with what's going on there and whatever proposals come forward, we'd be certainly interested in learning more about them to make sure that it's you know, compatible with the overall neighborhood that we're in.
Absolutely, President Jacobs made it clear to make sure you were in, your subdivision was in the loop.
Thank you, thank you. That's all I had. I will turn it back over to Mr. Jacobs so speak.
Hey Jeff, no, I appreciate you joining, I appreciate what you do as an HOA president. It's a lot of work and you know, we need you, so keep doing it and thank you.
Thank you, well, I, as I said, when I first moved to Long Grove many years ago, thirty years ago, I was so involved with my career and the family and everything in those days. I was really basically just, you know, a weekend resident. But then after those things shifted, I decided it was time to give back and get more involved in local activities and the functioning of our homeowners association seemed like a good way to do that. And so I've enjoyed the experience so far and seeing the village grow and develop and take on new issues. And it's, it's made me feel very much a part of the community and I like that and I value that.
Well, we appreciate you doing it Jeff and, and thank you and also thanking, thank you for letting your wife or however it goes, Helen, thank you for letting Jeff you know, be a HOA president or playing commission chair, right, either way, however that goes, whoever let, who do whatever, thank you both.
Thank you.
Perfect, all right, hey, the next item on the agenda is public comment, is there anyone here tonight that would like to make public comment? All right, if, if not, we do have we do have the public safety, the Lake County Sheriff or Fire Protection Districts here. On the agenda is Sergeant Ryan Amber here tonight?
President Jacob, Sergeant Amber just contacted me about twenty minutes before the meeting and said he could not be in attendance tonight. And if we had any issues to certainly reach out him, reach out to him tomorrow.
All right, anyone have anything they want to bring up right now or? If not, we'll keep us moving. All right. The, the next item on the agenda is consideration of an approval of an ordinance providing the issuance of the village of Long Grove, Lake County, Illinois, Heron's Landing Water Special Service Area tax refunding bonds is what it says, I think this is the refinance, it should be refunding or refinancing bonds. You know, at the last meeting, we we, you know unanimously supported refinancing these bonds because the interest rates are lower, it can save the residents close to eight thousand dollars each over the term of it. We also sent out notices regarding a prepayment option. We now have before us the actual documents to approve, I don't know Greg, if you have anything you want to comment or if anyone is here from the bond council to answer any questions?
I can't see if Laura Byless, who is our bound councils on here, but and Dan Spear from Spear Finance, or is supposed to be here, so.
If no one is otherwise available, I can at least give a ten thousand foot summary of what's before you. As you said, President Jacob, the existing special service area bonds for Heron's Landing were, were issued some time ago at higher interest rate periods, oh, we have a hand up, so maybe that's somebody who you see that Bill?
Yeah, I tried to ask on mute, who's that?
Yeah, hi, this is Dan Forbes from Spear Financial.
Ah, thank you Dan.
Yeah, I'd rather listen to the ten thousand foot, you know, introduction than go into the details.
When we want to get to the details Dan, take your parachute and jump out this, out of this plane.
I am here to answer any questions or I can sort of run through it, but the introduction covered most of the, the information, so it's, it's whatever your pleasure is.
We originally issued those bonds and they did have a provision for an early call and we are now able to pursue that. There was some initial discussion with some of the residents in Heron Landing and there seemed to be support for moving forward. And so that's what we discussed last meeting and tonight is the bond ordinance, what the bond ordinance does is essentially set the parameters for the final issuance of the bonds. The bonds will then be marketed and be ready for sale and if they meet the parameters, there'll be a bond purchase agreement that will set forth the, the terms as well as a bond order that, and a host of other, other documents, but they will set the final terms for the sale and lead to a sale of those bonds, which the proceeds will be used to purchase the outstanding bonds and essentially continue the, the debt service but at a lower interest rate. So Dan, if you want to fill in any blanks from there, feel free.
No, I thought that was very well presented, better than I, I guess the only thing I might add is that we're not changing anything as far as restructuring or anything. The most, essentially the intent here is simply to switch out a lower interest rate for the higher interest rate, which is currently being paid by the homeowner, so we're trying to keep this very simple, keep all the terms pretty much the same as before. And again, with the prepayment option which is available. This is the one time that actually we're right at the call date that this can be done. So I, I definitely think it's in the best interest of the SSA owners and I think it's great that the village is doing this on their behalf.
What questions does any of the board have?
I'll move to approve an ordinance providing for issuance of village along Grove Lake County, Illinois, Heron's Landing Water Special Service Area, Special Tax Refunding Bond Series twenty twenty-one.
Okay, moved by trustee Baraski, seconded by seconded by trustee Tenucci. That's a roll call, Michelle, if you would be so kind.
Trustee Baraski.
Hi.
Trustee Tenucci.
Hi.
Trustee Michaux.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
All right, motion carried, thank you everyone. All right. Yep, that was easy, you can, I guess I can put your hand down too now, right? There you are, okay, the next item on the agenda is the presentation acceptance of the annual financial report audit completed by Sickich. I believe Dan Berger here, I have the slides, if you want to present them, that would be great.
Sure, you can go ahead and share them whenever you're ready, I just want to give you a quick overview of the process and, and thank you and encourage you to ask any questions that you might have as we go through this. We, we met at a planning meeting. We did the whole audit virtually, by the way, so when I say we met, we pretty much did what we're doing tonight. Back in late March, we did our preliminary, I call it field work, even though, like I said, it was virtual in May, and then our final field work was done in mid-August. We were able to issue the financial reports in October. We also had a meeting with President Jacob and, and trustee Kritzmeyer to just go over the draft of the report back in mid-September, we're pretty much good to go then and we're pretty much just waiting to see whether or not the board wanted to create a new TIF fund effective April thirty two thousand twenty-one or during the current fiscal year, so we just waited a month until we got the thumbs up to go ahead and issue the report and that's what we did, so the report was issued in, in accordance with state law. We got it in under the Halloween deadline and the, I can give you the best news I'm allowed to give as an auditor, which is that we issued an unmodified opinion, commonly referred to as a clean opinion, we refer to it as unmodified. It's the best opinion we're allowed to give. And with that, I also wanted to make sure I thank staff. Greg and Denise did a great job of getting back to us with all the information we needed and Debbie Smith did an outstanding job getting ready for us. We only had five adjusting journal entries this year, which is significantly less than last year, so this being our second year, we really hit our stride in getting the documents out on time and with the minimum of delay and pain, I hope, to the, to the village and, and Debbie. So thank you very much, I also want to thank Lindsay Fish, our manager on the audit, she did a great job of preparing the documents and going through and reviewing all the work papers prepared by staff, with that, we can get on with the rest of the presentation here. So what we have here is just the general fund and its components of fund balance, the non-spendable portion is the amount that's been advanced to the TIF and that's risen to six, six million dollars. The unassigned fund balance is still in a very enviable position of three point three million and you see a graph down at the bottom that give you a percentage, the non-spendable is growing. It went down just a little bit in this past year, but it has grown significantly in the last ten years. The committed and unassigned of thirty-six percent is still a healthy fund balance, but it's it's, it's a few, less percentage than it was ten years ago. So next slide please. This is the one I cringed when I looked at right before the meeting. We're showing the, the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and unfortunately I had marketing help me with this, I'm not blaming her, I should have proofread it, but it says point nine six and that should be ninety-five point eight nine percent, not point nine six percent, so that bar graph down at the bottom took a nosedive, it actually should have gone up almost to the hundred percent line. So it actually improved significantly from last year as a percentage of expenditures mostly because expenditures dropped significantly, they, they were up over four and a half million dollars last year and dropped down to three point two million dollars this year. So significant decrease in the expenditures which resulted in a significant increase in the percentage. So basically you have eleven and a half months worth of expenditures in your fund balance. We can go to the next slide please. This is the total revenues by, by type. And we're showing that the revenues have held steady in a, in a COVID year, which I think a lot of us expected sales tax, income taxes, et cetera, to go down somewhat, but in total they did not, they actually went up three hundred thousand dollars and we'll see that in the next slide too. Also fines and permits, fees, permits, licenses and fines were almost exactly what they were last year. Number of building permits were pretty much the same as in prior years and the one that took the big nosedive is as everyone knows, investment income with the strict rules about what a village can invest in, no equities, just the, the, the revenues for investment income really significantly were reduced in the past year and probably will continue for a bit in that realm. Next slide is the bar graph, line graph to show you the percentage of revenues by type and the dollar amounts. And we can go on to the next one, nothing really to note there. The next one is expenditures by function. And we can see that the expenditures themselves were three point one three million dollars with significant increases in general government and in a public works for projects that were done during the year. And it did increase significantly from the prior year. Back it seems like it does have its ebbs and flows over the last ten years, as you might imagine with your budget and capital outlay, et cetera. And the next slide, please. Is just a line graph of those, for those that are better with graphs than with numbers. So we can go on to the next one. This is the tax revenue slide for the last five years and as you can see, sales tax actually increased nearly three hundred thousand dollars from the prior year and is nearly, it, 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 it really wasn't outstanding, I think a lot of people ordering from home and things like that really drove some of that as well as some of the newer businesses that have contributed to that. The the downtown SSA decreased ever so slightly, about six thousand dollars, by the way. And I think the other one I wanted to point out here is telecommunications tax. I think we're going to continue seeing that reducing as people, fewer and fewer people maintain their landlines. Kind of the direction that's been going for all my clients. And then the okay, this is the growth of the amount that the TIF fund owes the general and open space and you can see that it was four and a half million dollars in two thousand twelve and now is at a high point of just a hair under ten million dollars. It's just, it's something that the village needs to keep its eye on and the downtown TIF increased its deficit fund balance by about sixty-four thousand dollars this past year. So then the last slide, I believe, is the TIF, the TIF fund balance, right, so there's the revenues and expenses and you see that the brackets around two thousand twenty-one didn't quite fit on the page properly, slid down another row, but that did increase slightly, like I said, about sixty-four thousand dollars. With that, that's pretty much all I had prepared. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the process, about the work product, the annual financial report that you also received or the board communication, the board communication is where we're required to tell you whether we had any difficulties doing the audit disagreements with management, things of that nature, so in the first section, no's are good. We also show you the adjusting journal entries that were made, again, those were significantly reduced and then the management letter gives some recommendations for improvements, mostly to internal controls, so pretty much, and, and all the new government accounting standards board statements that will or might affect the village going forward. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board?
Um, just one request. Could we receive an updated copy of that presentation that fixes the error? It's a pretty jarring graph.
Yeah, I'm, I apologize, I jumped out at me as soon as I saw that and I will definitely fix that and get it out to Greg tomorrow, thank you.
You know what's funny is when I looked at it, I thought it was ninety-six percent, but I didn't understand the line graph. And so in my mind, I made it ninety-six percent, but
So did I, apparently.
So, so thank you for catching it.
Hey Bill, just a comment on the, on the big document, which is the actual annual report with the, whatever it was, sixty pages or whatever, page twenty-four, the last paragraph. There's the word haul and I believe that should be shall instead of haul. So maybe I want to just double check that, I think I'll check that through.
Yep, you're right.
That was really my only comment towards the document itself, well, I got a couple more, I guess, and, and I don't need answers right now, I just wanted maybe a clarification down the road. Page fifty-nine. The emergency communication system showed an actual expenditure of fifty-two fifty, fifty-two fifty-two or something like that. I, I'm not sure what the emergency communication system was, was, so maybe I'll follow up with Greg later on that. Same page, page fifty-nine, budgeted item with fifty-two thousand was mowing and reported actual was seventy-five eighty, that struck me as kind of an odd disparity and I don't know why. Maybe it was misclassification or something, it just struck me as a little bit weird.
Sorry, which pages?
Yeah, I'm not getting the page numbers to match, so must be
It was page
You probably have it on your computer, which is different than the numbers on the
Yeah, I do, I do, I'm sorry, um, all right, I can go back and double check that and I'll shoot you as a note, maybe it's easier to do it that way.
It looks like the one with the mowing is page fifty-one of the report.
Ah, thank you, thank you Kent, so it was page fifty-one for both, both of those items and I think.
Yeah, I could check that classification and shoot it off to Greg tomorrow.
Yeah, I didn't think it was a big issue, it just struck me as weird that we had fifty-two K budgeted for mowing and seventy-five hundred actual expenditure. That was it, Bill, had some other comments from down the road and some other philosophical questions for some of the things in there, but nothing specifically on the audit itself, thank you.
Thank you Chris, anybody else? If, if, if not, we, we need a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-one annual audit as presented and filed with the state of Illinois Comptroller's Office.
So moved.
All right, moved by trustee Tenucci, seconded by
Second.
Seconded by trustee O'Connor, roll call please.
Trustee Tenucci.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Baraski.
Hi.
Trustee Michaux.
Hi.
And trustee O'Reilly.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, Dan, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all and as I always remind my boards, I work with staff, but I work for the board, so if you have any questions going forward, please feel free to reach out, I'd be happy to talk to you.
Thanks Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at, at the last meeting, we approved a resolution to switch some of our accounts to, to Wintrust and from the Baxter Credit Union. And so in order to make that happen, we had to, we have a resolution in front of us that is what we've had before, it's similar to what we had before where you've got to have a combination of an appointed and elected official to move money around. And so you know, basically you have before, before your resolution to approve the the signatures for me and Bobby, Denise and Greg for Wintrust Bank.
And, and is also included on that.
Oh, did I skip in, I'm sorry about that, yeah.
And the other thing that I'll note, this does differ slightly from the resolution that you last reviewed and approved back in, I think it was July in that it does include provisions that Wintrust has as part of its customary resolution for new accounts. So we have incorporated those, what we've made our provision regarding the multiple signatures superseding any of their, excuse me, any of their provisions.
Any discussion, go ahead Rita.
No, just gonna ask if you're looking for a motion.
I have some questions, maybe.
Yeah, Chris, go ahead.
I mean, you can make a motion, Rita, ask my questions whenever.
Go ahead.
All right, just kind of philosophical question. Should we have any like background checks or anything on any of our signatories? I, I know we do it for Greg during the hiring process, but like any other staff members on the list or even any trustee, should we like do a background check to make sure they don't have any financial crimes in their background? That'd be one question, um, philosophical, I know, don't have to really talk about it tonight, just kind of philosophical. Second question is, do we have enough firewall in place between the names who are signing checks, people are signing checks versus the ones who are approving the expenditures and preparing the checks in a sense? To me, it seems like if there, to, to me, there should be some firewall between the person who like takes an invoice.
To me, it seems like if there, to me, there should be some firewall between the person who like takes an invoice. Reviews it. Posted for approval by the approving parties and then sends it to whoever the heck prints the check. And the signature people and the signatories. It seems like we should have a firewall there.
Okay. Can I ask you a question, though, because.
Please.
We, we approved the bill's report before any checks were cut. So we all are actually. Seeing them before they go out. So you have in, in tonight, I believe we have a bill's report in, in the agenda. So you'll be actually looking at everything that's going to be cut. And that's the way it's been. All the time. And I think this, and Vic helped me out here. You know, this also deals with moving money around and so forth. Anytime anything needs to be moved around beyond cutting a check. It requires those two signatures as well, which is different than what you were talking about with the checks. We're all approving that each, each, once a month, we approve the bill's report.
So, okay, Bill, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, yeah, I know I look at the, the report of the checks. I don't know if I analyze them, know the details, it's like why they're there, what, what the invoice is for. In the case of moving money around, do we have enough firewall in case two people decide to go rogue and. Cut a check one day, sign it, and then they disappear. Now, I'm saying it would happen, but do we have enough firewall in place to prevent that kind of scenario?
Well, I think, I think, I think why we, and, and Bill, this is what you went with. You said you wanted to make sure that there was. Not just two staff members or two elected officials signing on a check, that anything that involved the movement of money. You wanted to make sure that it was both an elected official and a staff member. So that way there was that, that check. We have two signatures required. Certainly, there could be collusion between the two people to, to trustee Borowski's point, but. The, the depth of the checks and in the firewalls. Which are certainly well founded. I don't know how far we can go with, with our, with our limited government model. And certainly, that's one of the things the auditors would have pointed out during their audit is if they thought we were. Vulnerable or exposed along those lines. It's not to diminish at all what trustee Borowski's saying, because. These things, we've seen them happen. And unfortunately, in our business, but. Yeah, it's, we've got a number of people that approve invoices that don't sign checks. Denise does, I do, but Sherry looks at invoices and then passes them for payment. Debbie, we've got that other check and balance by having Sider, which is an outside entity, which also. Is at risk should something happen and they have liability too. So. For a smaller community and a smaller unit of government, I would say that my experience tells us we're. Better protected than some. But again.
I might, if I might jump in and, and Chris, I, I, I share the. The, the risk as being out there, but you may recall that. The village did have a different manner for checks where there was a threshold amount. That could be signed only by one person and over that amount had to be two. That was something that the auditors some years back had raised as a potential vulnerability. And that was one of the impetus for changing the manner in which we issued or. Execute the checks and other orders through those accounts. So. Could it be more robust? Yes, it could. But this was consistent with what I recall the auditor recommendation was. However, many years ago that was.
The only thing that I will say is when the ordinance that we did with Bill Balling. I didn't like the, the, the fact that it was two signature. I wanted it to be an elected. And an appointed official, because I thought that that offered that extra protection, so.
Well, thanks for the, thanks for the comments. Like I said, we're just more of a philosophical question. So I appreciate that. So thank you for the comments.
Any other discussion? If not, is, does Rita still want to make a, a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve resolution designating Bill Jacob and Kritzmeyer, Bobby O'Reilly, Denise Errol Rosenquist. And Gregory Jackson as authorized signatories with Northbrook Bank and Trust, North America, also known as Wintrust.
Moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by.
I'll second.
Second.
Trustee Tanucci, beat you, Jenny? Roll call, please, Michelle.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee Michelle.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Okay, motion, motion carried. All right. We've got on the agenda. Consideration of a motion to refer to the planning commission zoning board of appeals. Request for a text amendment regarding a shooting range and related activities. We have a company that's expressed interest in opening a gun range with related sales in the village, specifically at the Menards, one of the Menards Outlets. This currently is a non permitted use. And because of that, we would need to refer this to the plan commission zoning board of appeals. For a text amendment. An amendment to the existing PUD. So this is what's in front of us now, and it's not about the company, but it's about the current code. So. Any discussion on this? If, if not, would I, go ahead.
Are, are we, are we obliged to submit text amendments to the plan commission? Is, is that our, is that our role at this time?
My understanding is that's the proper step is to give this to the plan commission and let them do their job.
Yeah, I think that the only exception to that is if there is a decided. A version to, to accepting this, we can save everybody the, the brain damage of having to go through a public hearing. But this is really just a first cut vetting. Is this an issue that. Is worthy of having a public hearing and getting more information so that the board can make a, a, a more. Complete and thoughtful review of this.
So then how do we determine that? We discuss it?
That's a, I think it's called a legislative gut check.
If, if, can I ask one question with that? Potentially also include kind of an environmental review. At this time, or does that wait until the petitioner actually?
The, the environmental review in terms of exhaust, which is the primary thing when you're dealing with a shooting range, is something that is going to be governed by our building. Codes. And, you know, I, I suppose if the village wanted to, to get. Further in the weeds than what those codes provide, it could, but there's also an overlay of state regulations under the. Air, air pollution provisions of the Illinois Environmental Protection Act. So I, I think that that's an area that is fairly significantly covered. That doesn't mean that the village can't. Look at it with even greater scrutiny and see if whether there's a, an additional layer of protection we want there, but. The, the zoning issue. Doesn't need to address those environmental issues because we do have them addressed through code divisions.
Thanks for that clarification.
Other. Comments, concerns? Does anyone want to, go ahead?
I, I, I only would speak for myself on this if, if I, I don't have any idea of. What the other trustees think on this issue. And then I. If, if we are opposed to this, I agree with Vic's suggestion that, you know. Why, why drag it out? If we're not, then that's a different story and we go through the protocol and so on and so forth.
Well, let me ask the question. Anyone opposed to this use?
I would say I am.
Okay, so you're opposed to it?
I am.
Okay.
If we had an industrial park, you know. It's tucked away in the corner of a manufacturing area or industrial park. To me, that would be more appropriate than. Then the location that is presently being requested.
Okay. All right, anybody else opposed to it?
I, I am. I, can you hear me?
I can, Jenny, yep.
This is Jenny. Yeah, I. I, yeah, I, that, I do know. You know, I'm very comfortable with our current ordinance that does not allowing the discharge of firearms in our community. I don't like the idea of the entrance to our village being a gun range. As the, the first building that they will see upon entering our village, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm opposed to it.
All right, well, let me go around the rest. Thank you for that. Let me go around the rest of the horn.
Bill, if I might just mention one thing, just to make sure that everybody understands clearly. Right now, although we do not have gun, gun shops as a permitted use. In the H1 district. We do recognize it as a special use in the B1 district, or maybe it's B1 and B2. And so while this is not identified for this location specifically in our zoning code, our zoning code. Doesn't outright reject the notion of, of gun, of gun shops. Within the village.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification. Let me just go around the rest of the. To pull the rest of the trustees here. Chris. What do you think?
Thanks, Bill. Based on what I know, I fully support the idea. I think it's a great location because of the traffic that's going past it. I think it can be a good event for many of the Long Grove residents. But I also think it will draw from the neighboring communities, especially to the south and the west. I think it's a great thing in that, in that location based on what I know today.
Thank you, Chris. Trustee O'Reilly.
I'm good.
All right, thank you. That was quick. Trustee Tanucci.
Um, yeah, I agree with it for the same reasons Chris mentioned. I also do think it's a good location. And from the research I've done on this company, it looks like they've been very good neighbors in the other. Cities and towns and villages where they've been located. I know that they prefer to be in a higher visibility location. And they purposely have designed their business so that it's bright and clean and friendly. Unlike some gun ranges can be just the opposite of that. So I do feel like they would be a good business for us, and I do feel that's a good location for them, and that would ultimately benefit us as well.
All right, thank you for that. I'll offer my comments. I support. Sending this to the plan commission to have them take a look at it as the next step, so. I know that. I have some friends as well that, that might make use of the place. And even including my son, most likely as well, and, you know, with, with his uncle, so. I, I would like to explore it further. So at this point, yeah, go ahead.
I'll, I'll move to refer. Refer this to the plan commission zoning board of appeals. And request text amendment regarding shooting ranges and related activities.
Okay, moved by trustee Borowski, seconded by.
I'll second it.
By trustee Tanucci. And that's a roll call.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee Michelle.
No, no.
Trustee O'Connor.
No.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Okay, do I need to weigh in, Vic?
You have the ability to vote on this, yes.
Um, I'm gonna, I'll be an I. All right, motion, motion carried.
Mr. President, if I could just take a second, Amanda Orincheck is here to with us tonight. She is our point person and through our intergovernmental agreement with Mundeline, she did some heavy lifting and worked closely with us and staff. To bring this to the board with as much information as we possibly could, so the board can make their decision. And I just wanted to make sure I introduced her to the board and thank her for the work she's done with us.
Thanks, Amanda. You can say hi, by the way, too.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me here. And it's like I didn't have to say much, but hopefully the report was pretty thorough for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to keep moving on the agenda. The next item is the village president and trustee reports. I do not have a report tonight, so I'll move it right away to trustee Borowski. Do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
All right, Anne is not here, so what about trustee O'Connor? You might have a report tonight.
Um, I'll let Jeff discuss the roads and the pathway and the parking.
Do you want to talk about the, the event on Sunday?
Oh, sure, we can do that. That's, that would be the Route 53 corridor.
Yep.
Green Corridor Coalition. There was an open space celebration Sunday. The, the gods smiled on us. The weather was fabulous. The pavilion we reserved was right next to the playground pavilion, so, or the playground area at the forest preserve. We had. We had a great, a great turnout. Mary Lee Sarlito was gracious enough to handle crafts for the children. And the number of children making turtles and snakes and learning about. Endangered species, turtles and snakes was terrific. They, 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 they couldn't get enough of it, actually. There was Sandy Hart from the Lake County Board was there and spoke with the gathering, the people who had gathered there. The turnout probably during the day, I would guess, was probably. 100, 130 people, maybe, maybe a little more than that. It was, it was a steady. Procession of, of folks that was, was really nice. And Melinda Bush, our state's, one of our state senators who is. And, and openly. Open activist for environment and then the environmental issues was there as well. She spoke. Who am I missing, though?
Tony Dean.
Tony, I'm sorry. Yeah, Tony was there. Tony chatted about. The progress from the last 30 years. It, it was a great turnout. And we were able to spread the message, celebrate and. Go on the next, the next step at this point. I don't know who has won the photo contest yet. They were spoken, that was a, tonight is the deadline. I think midnight tonight's the deadline for entry, so we'll find out about that. But it was, it was very nice. It was, the Sierra Club was there, the Audubon Society was there, Friends of Indian Creek. So that was very nice.
Yeah, thanks for delivering that report. I was able to make it for a little bit too, so good event, good showing. So thank you.
Yeah, it was good.
All right, anything else? We'll, we'll keep ourselves moving. It's trustee O'Reilly next.
I have nothing.
All right, thank you for that report. Trustee Michelle.
I just wanted to say that the visit from the Stevenson students last Wednesday, though a little cold, was. A great success. The kids had a good time. Thanks. Greg gave a, a short presentation to the kids. As did Rachel from Epilogue. John Kopecky gave a tour of the village to the kids and with lots of little tidbits. And Sunset provided lunches. And then they were let loose. I think their probably favorite part was being let loose for the last 40 minutes to go spend money at the candy stores and the donuts. So I think I talked to the marketing teacher the next day and she said, the kids all want to come back again today. So I think they had a good time and it was a, it was a big hit, so. End of report.
Had they been into, in Long Grove previously, Jenny, all of them, or was, was it new to any of them?
Surprisingly, I think only six of the kids had been to Long Grove before. A lot of them were like Buffalo Grove or, you know, north or east. So, yeah, they hadn't been here.
Wow. That's great, since they're going to be helping us with marketing.
Exactly, and they, several of the businesses reached out to, if they were interested in working. And I did see Monpa's Candy Jeff talking to a couple kids who were interested in jobs, so.
That's great.
You never know. Yeah.
All right, thanks for organizing that. And I know, special thanks to. Greg for the work that he did. And I know Anne was involved in it as well, so thank you. Thank you all. All right, trustee Tanucci, do you have anything for us?
Nothing this week.
All right, uh thank you. Um, moving right along, we have approval of the October twenty twenty-one pay warrant. This is Chris where we get to approve the the bills, right?
Duly noted. I actually looked at them this time, so I'm ready to I'm ready to move to approve them.
All right, moved by trustee Barowski. Seconded by.
Second.
Uh trustee Michelle, that's a roll call.
Trustee Barowski.
Hi.
Trustee Michelle?
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor?
Hi, I'm sorry.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Hi.
And trustee Tanucci?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, Jeff, you're uh you're on the hook for the engineer's report. You're next on the agenda.
All right, very good. Thank you. Uh, I will continue the uh tradition here that I've had the last few weeks and just updating the construction projects first. I'll uh start with North Kruger Road. Uh, that project, uh all the stabilization and site restoration is done. No grass growth yet. Uh contractor was out there earlier this week, yesterday, uh addressing some punch list items.
Today, too.
And yes, and today, yep. So they're working on getting that uh that work done. The they will not be able to close out the contract because uh per the state specs, the tree uh evaluation gets done next spring, so we've discussed where that's gonna go. My feelings on that have not changed. Uh, meaning that uh we're going to see some some new trees in the spring, I believe. Uh, the twenty twenty-one road program, switching to South Kruger, uh they were working on that hard this week as well. Uh, and there was uh some scheduling delays. The restoration did not happen Friday as the engineer report had said. Uh, they are scheduled to have that project wrapped up um by the end of tomorrow. Excuse me. The Stempel parking lot, uh that the project is uh complete from a paving standpoint. Uh, the paving striping, uh we were um shooting for that to take place tomorrow, but it's actually scheduled for Friday. So after Friday, um all of the work for the parking lot paving and striping will be complete. Sands, the access to Old McHenry Road, uh we finally got uh the verbal so what I'm looking for, the verbal uh okay from the county that that would be allowed. Uh, now we need to wait for the permit. Geski and Sons is still going to complete that work. Uh, it's gonna be, it's a lot less weather dependent because of the concrete uh involved with that and the uh small amount of asphalt, so uh once we get the permit from the county, we'll be able to uh get that uh work scheduled and completed. Uh, today, uh Wooten Electric was on site. They were uh cleaning and painting the light poles that are out there. Uh, make those look nice and black again. Uh, they're also going to retrofit the lamps out there, but uh hopefully brighter, but uh certainly less uh.
Hey, Jeff, it looks like they were done.
Okay.
Yeah, because when you look at them, they look like almost regular light bulbs that are screwed in, but they're little LED
Okay.
lights, so and they're brighter. I just, it was um dust. I could not tell how bright it would be at night, but so the posts look great.
Good.
And the the bulbs look like they they should be brighter. Um, there is one light post that's uh by the um bridge that they didn't touch. I don't know if that one's supposed to be touched or not, but uh it was not painted or they didn't put a new light bulb in it.
Yeah, so uh Wooten Electric will be coming back to remove that uh light pole since there's the uh adjacent uh pedestrian lighting right along uh Robert Parker Coffin Road. Uh, the downtown organization uh has made a request to um maintain the outlet and the power there for the park. So um we'll need to uh work out the the specifics on that. Uh, I'm waiting for uh a kind of a concept drawing plan from Wooten Electric, what kind of pedestal uh they can uh retrofit and put there.
So what will we do with the post if it comes down? Will we save it, or?
Uh, yes, we can salvage that.
So, all right, well, something to think about. Maybe we can use it somewhere else at some point, so. Interestingly, I think it was Bobby's idea. I know it was your idea to repaint the posts when we were out there. And um, you know, they look pretty good. I mean, it looks, they look pretty vintage. We would pay extra to to have it look that way.
So we we got we got a good deal with Wooten doing that, so I'm I'm glad they look look good, so. Um, all right, uh moving down, uh item number seven, this has been on the agenda. I've no, I haven't highlighted it for uh a while now. But when the county reconstructed Old McHenry Road, um you may remember that they put their standard overhead light at the westerly corner of the intersection, uh which is in front of the landmark exteriors building. And that light was fifty feet in the air and very close to the overhead uh power poles. Uh, not long after they installed that, they took it down because it didn't meet uh the required uh separation and clearances, uh light pole to power pole. So the county has been uh working on a custom light, uh which is basically a shorter pole to put over there so that way that uh corner of the intersection gets lit. Finally, uh got word from them last week that the design of that has been complete, and they are going through their final internal uh processes for costs and budgeting and all of that stuff uh to get that to actually installed. Quite a while here after the construction was complete, so.
Dude, I could have put a hacksaw to that, you know?
You know, what's funny about that one, um Jeff, is that I actually went to Sandy Hart in that one because the the intersection wasn't illuminated properly. And then we kind of got, yeah, we're gonna work on it, and it's taking a long time, but it'll be nice when it's up there because it it there is a shadow there. And it's a safety issue, so I'm glad that they're finally doing it.
Yeah, I'll I'll uh I'll keep uh getting updates and um hopefully that thing moves forward to getting that thing in- installed. Finally, right?
Yep.
Uh, uh, let's skip down to uh number eleven on the engineer's report. That's the uh the path. Uh, Chicagoland's moving along nicely on that. Uh, they were out there today pouring concrete. There's scheduled to have that done uh here uh tomorrow and Thursday. Uh, they're also going to complete all of the uh fine grading for the ditching and all of that stuff here in the next uh week for and get the site stabilized. Uh, their electrical contractor, they were also on site today doing some work for the pedestrian crossing, so that project is uh moving well. Uh, that project, just to as a reminder, has a November twenty-fourth completion date. Uh, everything's trending that the Chicagoland will meet that. Uh, six, uh, moving on to, uh, well, let me hit the one of the other construction projects, number nineteen on the engineer's list, not not a village project, but something that's uh been discussed and near and dear to everybody's heart is the berm at the the Grove Country Club. Uh, village manager Jackson and myself, we went out and met with the contractor yesterday, and the contractor was having the trees and the shrubs installed and also uh stabilizing the berm. Uh, we uh impressed on the contractor to get us the As Built survey so we could confirm all of the elevations. Uh, that has been promised to us um here within a week, so uh hopefully I get that and we'll turn that around and get that reviewed. The uh village forester is also going to make a site visit tomorrow, uh just to make sure that all of the landscaping items, trees and shrubs, meet the uh approved specifications, you know, plant uh species type and uh location. Uh, and then uh switching gears, just jumping back uh to item sixteen C on the report. The Lake County Stormwater Management Commission uh has initiative, has an initiative, it's called Operation Fifty-two, to meet with all of the fifty-two municipalities in Lake County, uh just to talk about uh stormwater drainage and things like that. A focus of the meeting when uh manager Jackson and I met with them on the twenty-ninth was potential for more DCEO funding uh that will be is scheduled to be released, I should say, to Lake County Stormwater, and Lake County Stormwater is already putting out uh their feelers, and they want input from the communities, what the uh pressing projects and uh drainage needs are for the communities so that uh you can uh get in the preferable line uh for funding if, when it it comes out. They asked us for a couple priority projects. Uh, we let them know that uh Lake Eleanor Estates is a private project, but yet something that's been ongoing with the village and uh needs to be resolved. We did mention that that one, the HOA is um moving forward with uh an application for grant funding, so um so that one uh wasn't quite the top of the list for the DCEO. We did uh bring up and talk about uh Martin Estates and Martin Woods, uh as you can recall from uh about a year and a half ago, we had the drain tile study over there on that uh subdivision, specifically Middle Sacks Road is uh certainly in the need for a storm sewer improvement, so um we'll uh be working with them over the winter here to get lined up, make sure uh whatever is needed. They have so that uh that is in line for for uh possible DCEO funding.
Hey, hey, Jeff, I also um brought up three lakes. I I missed the meeting, so sorry about that, but uh after the fact, so that's one that needs to be looked at, too, right?
Yeah, and and uh manager Jackson and I talked about that yesterday, and I I think that one is going to go the way of being even more unique. Uh, because that subdivision does not have a homeowners association. So I'm gonna have some additional conversations with Lake County SMC on how that can be funded with with state money since it's not going to a municipality or a homeowners association or even a property owners association. So um and uh with the DCEO funding and through Lake County Stormwater, uh land rights is certainly an issue. Uh, so I I'm gonna, I'm gonna wade through that, but great point, and uh I guess it kind of kind of uh wasn't uh one that we initially brought up, but uh certainly not, certainly a discussion I'm gonna have with Kurt Wolford over there.
Yep, complicated. All the uh property owners near the lake own own that whole wetland, so it's unique. But everyone in that community benefits from it, so there's truly is a way to make it work out.
Yeah, I think everybody in that community benefits and even uh, you know, would extends and would have benefits to, you know, Joni's Pizzeria, you know, that properties over there in the downtown, so.
Yep.
So that's uh what I wanted to highlight tonight. Um there's a lot, a lot of things uh going on. Weather's still good, so construction is still ongoing, so that's a good thing. Um, but I will uh entertain questions.
I just have a question before I turn over the board. So there's some backfill, like by cigars and more and some other spots um in Stempel. Will that be filled in?
Oh, okay. Um, thank you. I um so the HD LGBA is going to make improvements in the park, and they need to uh excavate and remove material from that park. And uh Ryan had a thought that, hey, how about, is there somewhere that we can uh put this material on the Stempel lot or around the Stempel lot, so that way we can um otherwise reduce the cost for the HD GLBA, and I says, well, um, okay, thanks for the request, but that in turn would offer the uh village to save some money uh by allowing the HD LGBA to put the soil there, and they would seed and uh restore that area. So they'll put topsoil material, you know, in that Long Island uh to make that more of a berm, and right now it's a a bird bath, is uh I'm sure people have seen if they've driven driven through, they'll also um put the topsoil to make the smooth transition uh beside cigars and more. So uh I I reached out to Ryan earlier today just to see what the timing of their project was. Last I heard was um their contractor was scheduled to start uh mid-November, so as it's mid-November, I thought that was a timely request from them, so I'll uh I'll keep uh Greg and he'll keep the board updated on on the status and the um schedule of that project, but uh uh Greg and I talked, and it seems like it's a win-win from the standpoint of both agencies and saving some uh some cash.
And then one other question, and I'll turn it over to the board on this on Stempel, and that is those little posts that protect vehicles from hitting the the light posts.
Yeah.
Is somebody gonna paint those um so they're all cleaned up?
So that was uh that was supposed to be done. I'm uh kind of surprised it hasn't been, so I will uh make sure that gets done.
Okay, yeah, it didn't look like they were painted. It looked, the light posts looked nice and shiny, but then you have what I think they should be yellow protective posts so that a car can't hit them, and it didn't look like they were touched up, so.
Okay.
Hey, Jeff, they still have their punch list they've got to finish, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does the board um have any comments uh or questions for Jeff?
Another philosophical one. Go ahead, go ahead.
Jenny?
I was just gonna ask. I was gonna ask about my favorite topic, the berm. Um, so last meeting, there was a discussion that there were still many truckloads of material that needed to be removed. Is there a concern that they are planting on top of the soil that needs to be removed, or are we assuming there? I mean, I know you've requested the As Built survey, but do you have concerns, I guess?
So uh Greg and I asked that very question to the contractor yesterday, and he said that he removed over two hundred uh truckloads of materials since the last time uh since the last board meeting. Uh, I did impress on him that uh we've seen a couple As Builds that were not uh in performance with the approved plan. And uh we would, we are more than happy to review an As Built before the plantings go in, but now that the plantings are in, um, you know, that's uh somewhat at their risk, if you will. So uh we conveyed that to them. Uh, I'm not going to assume that it's correct. I'm going to wait for the uh As Built survey that's um prepared and submitted by a registered uh land surveyor.
Thank you. I just uh live and work across, and I did not hear heavy machinery, so I'm skeptical. Thank you.
All right, um, Chris, you had a philosophical comment or question?
Well, just kind of a question. So this morning, um eighty-three in the pathway, the workers were there this morning. It struck me as a real dangerous situation with people in traffic flying by that intersection during rush hour. Um, I'm wondering if it makes any sense to ask our her uh Lake County Sheriff to maybe hang out there or some to maybe slow people down a little bit. I mean, those workers are like sitting within, I don't know, a foot of of the traffic pattern. Uh, it just struck me as a real dangerous situation.
I'll I'll take you. I'll take care of that first thing in the morning, trustee.
I mean, just, uh, yeah, I don't know. I I don't know. Maybe it creates more of a hazard by putting a cop there once in a while. I don't know, but it just looked like those guys are sitting right on the edge of their the holes where they had the curbs cut out, Jeff, and they had a couple horses up, but those guys are literally like right on the edge, just just so close to getting hit. Just a layman's perspective, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up. Any other?
The Stempel parking lot, um, does the pavement need to be dry to put the striping in?
Yes, it's supposed to rain on Friday, yeah, or snow.
Or snow. And then is there some temperature under which they can't do it anymore?
Uh, so there's the uh, there's some temperature specs for that as well. Um, they were, they were shooting for Friday, trying to get it in this week when we still got some sunshine and some warmer weather. So we're going to um, gonna cross our fingers on that because uh next week uh does not look uh as warm. we're going to, um, going to cross our fingers on that because, uh, next week, uh, does not look, uh, as warm.
Yeah, it looks like, uh, tomorrow night, in the Thursday and Friday, we're expecting rain, so we could have a wet lot. And a cold one, too.
So, uh, yeah, with every, everything going on, with how everything's trending, um, you know, well, peek behind the curtain into my mind is, you know, now, um, Geski needing to, at their cost, uh, put some temporary striping down if, if need be, so, uh, hopefully, uh, everything works out this week, but, uh, you know, that's, uh, another thing that can happen because, you know, that lot, uh, being a sea of asphalt, not, not striped over the winter would not be, uh, an ideal situation.
Right, I agree.
All right, any other, uh, questions for Jeff or comments? All right, I think you're, um, at the end of the report, Jeff.
Oh, oh, I will say that I did get caught one last time, one last time in the traffic on Route eighty-three yesterday. The state was doing the striping, so, uh,
Oh, is that what they were doing? I saw the vehicles, okay.
Somehow they got, they miraculously got their shipment or they got a shipment like a, uh, post to, uh, I dot. Uh, but, uh, they were able to take advantage of a nice day yesterday and, and get that done. Um, so unfortunately, it, uh, backed up traffic for a while, but, uh, the upshot is, it's done.
Good. Now they can take the signs down. There, there are still signs at intersections along the way.
So, I'll, I'll get a schedule on that, too.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right, if there's no more.
End of report.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next item in the agenda is the approval of the board meeting minutes from the October twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty-one meeting. Any amendments or modifications requested? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Moved by trustee O'Connor.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Micho, guessing.
Awesome.
Roll call, Michelle.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Barowski.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
You're muted, Bobby. Bobby?
Yes.
Yes, okay, hi.
And trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
All right, motion carried. Um, there is no, uh, leave tonight, I believe, for, um, a, um, I'm an executive session, but we do have, uh, the, don't we have the executive meeting minutes on this agenda here, Greg? Sit here.
No.
So it's not there for approval?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, we have a copy of them though in the, right, from the, in our file.
For which executive session are you speaking of?
Um, I think the ones I pulled down were from the, uh, September fourteenth meeting. We got a copy of?
Those were already approved, I thought.
Yeah, those were approved.
Approved, okay, all right. Somehow I pulled them down. I don't know how, where they were, so. All right, well then, um, I guess, um, we're ready to adjourn the meeting. Somebody want to make a motion?
No, moved.
Moved by trustee Micho.
Second.
Seconded by trustee, uh, Barowski. That's a roll call.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Barowski.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
All right, motion carried, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Everybody have a great night.
Thank you.